Okay, we're gonna open up the town away and select board meeting. It's Tuesday, October twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty four. It is six P M. All members are present with the exception of Mary Ann Butak, and we are going to start with the pledge of allegiance. And the flags behind you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Upcoming agenda, board members, any foreseeing conflicts of interest?
Uh, no, but I'd like to make a statement about it's not a conflict of interest. It's more about a um. Appearance of bias in the packet was an invoice, obviously Stevenson, but we're not discussing the actual. Invoice. We've already approved the dollar amount. The item is more about discussing where it's funded from. So I don't believe that's a conflict or bias.
Thank you.
This is a matter of disclosure. My wife's on the lab board. I don't think it means anything for it, but if you all do. Do we have that as a discussion?
It's an appearance of bias.
I don't.
Family member.
Well, it's not an interest. Well, whatever. I'd say let's take a vote and see if you think it's a conflict. If you do, I'll sit it out.
In the appearance of bias, does it also tie into a potential? I- i- is it a requirement that there's a financial relationship in that appearance of bias? So in this situation, I would say there's not a financial uh. Benefit.
I I don't believe there's I don't believe there's any conflict whatsoever on given the given the what we're talking about on the relationship. Any more than if we were talking about a matter that somehow related to the church and someone was a church member, or if we were talking about a matter that related to the school and someone was uh. You know.
Start.
But 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 the bylaws say if you all think that's a problem, we vote on it. And if you if you think it is. Uh, then it is.
Do board members want to vote on this? Who do we like to have raise a motion? What do you think?
You feel feel better.
Yeah, I'm happy to go. I I I don't see a financial conflict of interest here.
I don't know that bias ruling enough to know whether it was just financial or not. I I looked at because it was clearly financial.
Financial.
From my perspective, but.
Well, knowing that, if 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 the conversations lead to something. That we're not seeing now, we can rediscover it.
That's sure acceptable. Does that work?
Okay, and to put to your point, I'd follow up on the language around the appearance of bias, if it's strictly a financial or if it should. It might just be a blanket appearance of bias. I don't have that in front of me. In our municipal book. But for the moment, we'll carry on.
Yes.
Okay. Agenda adjustments, Bryce?
So there's a couple of things that were some. Last minute changes. You'll see you have a separate minutes uh from the fifteenth, so you'll want to be looking at those, the ones in the packet. Um, the draft, there was a couple items that. We reviewed and changed those being um. The supplement and abatements when the abatements were made in the draft, the original packet draft. They were all put in the same, but if you remember B through E were. Uh, motions made by the abatement number, so we just wanted to reflect that correctly. And the second one was. In old business C. Uh, when we discussed the plow contract, it resulted in two motions and the second motion. In the packet version. That draft, it there was a dollar value and we went back. And the motion actually did not have the dollar value included in it. It was just in the discussion portion.
Okay. Okay.
And then one other thing before that. If. If the board would. Um, I think it would be a lot cleaner if we move nine B before the warrants because there is a item in that warrant. That is um. You know, is funded by a or. Is trying to get funded by a reserve, so we really need your approval.
Okay.
Um, and because if you don't approve it, they have to subtract that out of the total.
Sure. Okay. Okay, thank you. Uh, meeting minutes.
Move we adopted. And it's uh, one one twenty four is written.
Uh, discussion. Is this?
It's not really this. I think this records what was said, but again, we've got that financial item in here, and I don't know whether that number was. A used in the conversation and B. Whether that's been validated to be correct, I think from.
Yeah.
The contractor that he feels that number is incorrect, even though there wasn't a of payment.
So these are on the fifty, the minutes of the fifteen.
I think it first. It would be a new business A.
Okay, okay. So the question.
I think it that I think it's.
Oh, I see. Yep, yep.
I think in the motion, the dollar value was stated. I can say that I went back to validate that dollar amount and it was. It's. Incorrect based off the fact that the figure in there was the total sand budget, but we actually didn't spend the total sand budget. So we. The total sand budget was forty thousand and we spent thirty seven thousand hundred sixty eight, so that's where the. The um. You know, incorrect part was, I don't know if you can go back and change that, but we can put it in this public meetings, public record that that is a. Incorrect value.
Got it. So we'll approve these minutes. As written and then amend or or put in the public record. Our recognition of this in uh error or cha- chain or mistake in the value or in the number.
Yeah, we can do it here or in town manager reports. I was gonna validate a couple of things in regards to the plow contract just to have it on the record. So I.
Sure.
It would be fine to wait till then.
Okay, that makes sense. I I have a small point on the minutes and it's a it. I think we should prove these as written, but. As a as a, you know. Experiencing reviewing minutes from years gone by for certain parts of town business. I was noticing, and I don't know if we did this with previous town manager, it never says who you are. It only references Bryce, and I don't know if that like if you get ten years down the road from now and you're digging through the minutes.
Yeah.
I'm not. It's a small point. I think we should approve as written, but it I don't think it says anywhere. It has our names, the board members, but there's never the town manager.
Yeah.
It's just it's a small point, but when you're in the attic of. Research, it can be really confusing.
Hundred years.
Yeah.
Yeah, should we put that uh? Trent up in the paragraph about who's here at the meeting?
Yeah, maybe that can be.
That you know, then the town manager, Bryce, uh, yeah.
Right, and maybe full name and town manager. I think that could be useful. It's a. Got them all. Anyhow, but we had a motion discussion, uh, all in favor. Okay. Uh, we have a second meeting minute.
We want this version.
Yeah, the first one's out of the pack.
Right, I uh, moved we uh. Adopted then it's October fifteenth, twenty twenty four is written. In the amended.
Uh, discussion. All in favor. Don't give up right time.
You have a request.
I think I was giving the board time for discussion.
So I'm still puzzling over the. Abatements.
Yeah.
Because we just. Moved the abatement number. And you had to have the separate piece of paper to cross reference. The names too, so you. It's it ends up essentially the same thing, but it's not. Technically what we did.
Yeah.
So I don't know. Let's I mean.
Because when we approve, we just reference the number.
We just referenced the number. We listened right through, but we had a supplemental sheet. So you'd either have to have the supplemental sheet. With this or. By influence.
Is that possible? Could we just attach that sheet? Well.
I don't know how significant that is.
I mean, the sheet is the sheet and we signed off on it.
Right.
And it's part of and it's. It should be in the record of this of this board meeting or the October fifteenth board meeting. The only the only problem is the the motions as stated. Are not the actual verbatim motions that were made and and passed on. And that's.
The intent is there, but not the verbatim.
Yeah, well, and it it the what's in the minute should be what was actually said and voted on, so. Uh, you know, I don't know that you need to add for Patricia Lawson, M sixteen L twenty two and the amount of five hundred and fifty five dollars and sixty cents, because you've got that sheet that we all signed as part of the record. In the in the vote was that we approved that abatement number. Uh, it is just what I think, but. So. If you want to be as if 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 we if we want to be uh sticklers, which I think, which I agree with, I think is good. You probably ought to change these to 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 say exactly what the motion says. But sometimes on our other. Minutes and motions, I don't know that. Do we always actually quote verbatim the motion that was that we acted on? Bryce, or do we or do we summarize it?
I think it's been done both ways.
Okay. I.
I would. It has been done both both ways, yes.
I I I think this is a as a. I would suggest, although I I'm not a Robert Truel's expert and I hate him. I would suggest that they say. That the minutes should reflect what actually was voted on verbatim.
Yes, I agree. So we'll do that. So we'll make with with amendments. We have a. All in favor. Okay. Uh, warrants. I'm doing a little D first. Oh, that's right. I have it written right here. Uh, so we're consider approving the use of G I S map reserve funds in the amount of five thousand for. G I S map updates.
Just want to motion, so move.
So is there? Do we have a second?
So the so the motion said be we approved the use of G I S map preserve fund in the amount of fifty five thousand dollars for.
Right.
G I S map updates.
I can. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Lord's uh discussion.
So that was um. We knew with the G I S map company that we were um. Six years behind. Each year we're supposed to do an update, a thousand. Uh, dollars a year to keep us up to the proper um. The, you know, the lots as they change get split off, and while I was doing this, I had seen that um the previous town manager must have uh put. Uh, created a reserve fund. Which was approved, and so it would make most sense to. Use the rest of those reserve funds before we um. Use what was in our budget for this year. Because we're on track now, once we've gotten all caught up.
And do they have an expiration date that we would want to use them anyway?
No, the reserves are there until we use them. And it's one of the reserve accounts that's more clear and it's titled for what exactly it's for.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor. Okay. Uh. Uh. Excuse me, account accounts payable. Somebody want to? Pad that off.
We will get approved. Did you need us to approve this Ridge Road Culver bit or?
That's fine.
All right, yeah. Move we approve a cost payable number seventeen in the amount of twenty nine thousand. Four dollars and nine six ten.
Second.
Uh, discussion.
So again, the biggest. Item on there, you'll see is the. A of C A I technologies and what makes up this bill is six thousand for the prior years that we missed a thousand for this year. And then. Just to use the software yearly, it's three thousand dollars, so. The subscription fee chip does utilize this these maps heavily. And so now that they're up to date, it really um. Makes it that much more useful.
From that updating, it already could.
Yeah.
And this is paid.
Yeah.
Uh, all in favor.
Okay, consider approve. Approving payroll. Warrant number eighteen in the amount of nine thousand six twenty three and sixty one cents.
Second.
Uh, discussion.
Uh, this is just a regular payroll.
All in favor. Okay. Old business, uh, review draft agreement on remediation for landfill of water. Uh, Bryce.
So. This is basically the template that the E P gave us pretty basic. Our lawyer took a look at it and. It's basically what we need to get this moving and done. I do have um. Email correspondence that you'll see in front of you from the homeowners. And uh. They kind of what their issues are with the agreement, so we gotta keep the ball rolling and. But this is the opportunity to branch off into. You know, I had reached out via email about a couple of board members maybe getting together with the. Property owner. I think. What you'll see when you read their response, there's a little frustration. It's not with just the town. It's with D E P. It's with the town. Um, you'll see, I just to give you some background. I don't know if I had told you this, but D E P tested their well in this uh October of two thousand and twenty two. Um. D E P notified them via email. A exactly a year later in October, November of twenty three. They never saw the email. And then you come to about a month ago, they had happened to say there was somebody here, you know. That tested our water, whatever came about from that, and it was kind of. You'll see there was an email to the town, but it was right in the. Change of uh. In the previous town manager to myself, so it just got missed in the. Chaos of things. So there's just a little frustration. I think that's why they may be.
So if this states um. What's your recommendation?
I would think that it would probably be proper to with. Board number two would meet with me and them, and I mean, clearly, I think it's pretty strong what they're asking and. My risk assessment for the town would say you we couldn't have that exactly, but I think we do have to work with them. Given the. You know what's going on.
Sure.
And that we can D P can be involved, Matt at D P what could be involved to. Try to. Work things along.
For numbers.
See, they seem to be hung up on the whole harmless agreement, which I understand because they're but this this is it's not a bad one. Yeah. This is paragraph nine. And I suggested some language to Bryce that really doesn't change it, but kind of explains it. The intent of this is to do such and such and not that. And the uh. And the whole point is. All we're asking them is to hold us harmless. From things that arise under the by virtue of the fact that we have made this agreement. We're not asking them to say we didn't that the pollution's not our fault. We're not agreeing to say it was our fault. We're not asking them to to give up any rights. Uh, they. I I believe that this is that this that this can be a little confusing, these whole harmless agreements are hard to understand. Assuming our lawyer doesn't have any objections, if it's a big sticking point, I'd just say delete the whole thing. Because it really, in my opinion, isn't worth much anyway. What the whole harmless agreement says is if is if they're agreeing that they're going to cover us for any damages. That fall within the ambit of the whole harmless agreement. I I don't really know what that means, because you have to think about what. What the person indemnifying you. How you're going to collect on that indemnity anyway. So I would uh. You know. The way the way the way we the way it's written is not bad. Uh, the explanatory comments also make it more clear that it's not bad. But I don't know that it would be that bad if we just crossed it out. Maybe ask our lawyer, what do you think?
Hmm.
But I do think they want us to say that we're liable for polluting their water, and I don't think we should say that. Even though we I don't know if we are or we're not. But this agreement doesn't say. That we are doesn't say that we're not that that we're agreeing under this state program to take care of the problem.
Right.
And. So. You know, meeting with them, is that going to be necessary to go over this?
I would think yes, because we'll just be tossing it. I've been kind of the middle man and it'll just go back and forth and.
And will you be willing to be with them then and we'll make that clearer since you both. Sure, well, and and I don't even know that Bryce sent them the changes. I think he talked to him about it and they just said this sounds like a. Bunch of gobbledygook.
Yeah.
Which. Perhaps it does.
So you and Henry are going to get together, schedule a meeting, possibly. If D P's available, maybe if that seems relevant, but are you two? I mean, you guys can kind of determine. How that should move forward.
Yeah, and they've I mean, the homeowner's been in contact with me right along too, and he went back and. Um. It's not a hundred percent certain if the T pass are from.
Right.
Landfill, but it's.
Sure.
Evidence that it could be.
Like, right, okay. Okay, uh. Update from the hiring advisory committee with a full job description. And easy. Why don't you take us there?
Yep, so you have a color coded. Motion in the packet, I believe. Uh, I think what we should focus on is. On the first page, first and second page, there's a couple of changes that came from the feedback we got. Last select board meeting. So then probably if you could just focus on the red line on. So in response in the second paragraph, a little wordy change, just to say the town manager has the authority. Um, that is a question of you're okay with that. It's just uh. Clarification of of who. Uh, you'll note that one of the pieces of feedback was could be numbered. So um. The. That was put in by a scribe. To uh. Number the paragraphs.
Sure.
Uh, which makes it a little easier for them to reference on on B C. Big B, little C, first page. Um. Question was raised about the town manager attending meetings um. When the manager's removal was being considered that actually came out of statute. We talked about it last time. That committee talked about it. Both both before and after, but for um. Um, this. The committee recommended the based on all the feedback and the continuing conversation we've had on it that we strike that. Um, I think. It's covered anyway. If you have to have a personnel meeting, it's covered in other things in the executive order and blah, blah, blah. So I don't think we need to put it in here. It almost looks a bit punitive.
Yep.
Well, it says he has to attend all the meetings.
Yeah.
That's how it starts out. All the meetings would include the meetings where you're talking about his removal.
So we we struck that. It just seemed like it is a it kept coming up. Uh, moving to page two, we added. Item E at the top of the page. There was a question around the general. Uh, responsibilities and the fact that um a town manager does serve as the immediate contact person and orchestrator of the response involving multiple agencies of town state governments. Just adding a a level of clarity that that's a general expectation. That cannot have feedback from here. The way we. Skipping on to additional roles of the town manager um. So five A was rewritten. This is around the role of the purchasing agent. And the original reference, again, this came from state statute for the town manager. Um, there was an original question on. Uh, why are we in front of the school department since um we don't have our own school department? Um, so we ended up rewriting that to remove the school department. But add the in accordance to the town's purchasing policies, and there is a purchasing policy, and that way if we change the purchasing policies, then the town manager's job. Follows along with the policy. But so.
Current current policy is that the town manager brings all these various con- contracts to the to the board for approval, and they still continue.
It is actually, yeah, it's a it's pretty complicated policy. It may be a little dated. We need to put that on the things to do to review that frankly. Um, and then there are different levels of what the town manager's got authority to do, whether it's the road budget owner and and yeah. Um. The bigger stuff comes to the select board for approval anyway, essentially, but yeah.
Okay.
So let's take a I'm going to take a head bob on that first section because that was just kind of the rewrite. Um, any. Concerns on the adjustments, you know, committee made.
This is consistent with the way they result for a lot for other. Town managers and towns about this size, so if you study those.
Yeah, and it's. A lot of it was based on the state. Now manage a statute anyway, we've just gone through. Poodles review and legislative classes. So then what's new this time is the expectations and qualifications, and I'm not going to read them through. We've got them grouped under. Expectations, abilities, uh, knowledge, and then the education and experience. Um. Again, we pulled from a number of sources, including the. Um. Existing job descriptions. Um. The. Recommendations from M M A documentation. And these um, I believe for the most part line up uh you with the. Um, the abilities line up with what we'd expect the person to do, so. Um, to pick on on some of them. Um. I'm going to have to find one now. Uh, but knowledge is an expectation that they are. Well, written through here is sort of a financial in the financial sections, so there's their abilities to 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 be able to budget and. And the finance records. That is exactly said. Um, I don't know whether you've had a chance to read these, if you want to. Comment on any particular section. Um, but expectations, capabilities and knowledge. It's pretty thorough um in terms of. What we would expect them to be able to do.
Did you want to comment?
Yeah, but I'll wait till you've been assured.
I can go. Oh, I'll do the same. I'm good.
On the last thing, education and experiments, I I know it says that this is the ideal candidate will be these things. But are are we saying that we're not going to hire somebody if they don't have five years' experience?
No, it does not. It says the ideal candidate.
Okay, but then what kind of does that mean for people who are who who are reading this for us? I I do. I I understand. I it does say the ideal candidate, but I don't. Uh. I don't know how that impacts our hiring decision. Uh.
Yep, so I think it does not preclude uh candidates with less than five years of experience with those criteria. To apply and then it's up to the um select board to uh select the most. To apply and then it's up to the, um, select board to, uh, select the most. Um, skilled applicant, so that we can't just pick our best friend.
I understand. Uh, and I I think you guys did a great job on this, uh, you just just, uh, for what it's worth. Uh. Do we need to, do we need to specify a, a, a minimum experience level? Five years versus three years, or or do we just say experience commensurate with the. With the duties and responsibilities stated above.
Oh, and not put a number there? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. Three, somebody with three years, somebody with five years, somebody with seven years. I'm not so sure, you know, you might have. You might have five years, might be just the first year done five times, as far as what what he's learned and what it means.
Yeah, and what we learned from other towns was, um, the way, I mean, so this is written, the ideal candidate will have experience in municipal government. What we learned from another town was their best candidate did not have municipal government experience, but they were a very well seasoned manager. So in terms of transferable skills and the ability to to function in this position, um, so that's, that's. Sort of why we've left it ideal.
Well, I think, I think, I I think you might be stating the same point.
Yes, so, yes, but all I'm saying is I wouldn't put the five years, because just like you said, other experience, other things, I would just say commensurate with. Carrying out the, 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 uh, this, this appears to give somebody. This appears to give somebody with five years' experience as a town manager, uh, a. A leg up on. Some guy, uh. With a, with a degree from Harvard Business School and two years' worth of experience who really is smart and impresses you. Uh, but but maybe not, but maybe not. Uh, you you guys thought about this long and hard. And and you, and 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 it's a nice job of just throwing that out for what it's.
You're talking about getting rid of a time.
That's right. I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm saying the manager, and I wouldn't even talk about the ideal candidate. Everything you say. Here is this was the manager must have, the manager must have an ability, so I wouldn't even do the ideal candidate. I'd say the manager. Uh. Must have, uh, uh, education and experience. In, uh, municipal or other business administration, commensurate with the. With the, with the duties and responsibilities outlined above, but if you guys thought the five years is good, I'm fine with it, because you've worked on it hard and have done a good job.
So I have one fellow member, well, one member of the committee here, um, so can we have, uh, I think Ken had a. Comment, question or a comment?
In in part. The reason we're having it is. To give people the idea of what they, how they fit in with other potential candidates, so they know. Where they need to be, so to speak, and know whether they'll be competitive or not. That doesn't mean that they qualify, but they don't have those qualifications. The other reason is. That this is a common. Um, requirement, uh, that other towns have. And so it's the kind of thing that the applicants, the town manager would be used to, and it gives them an idea, so that. You know, there are other towns, larger towns, that say that a master's degree is required, not required. Um, so the purpose was to give some parameters for them to to understand sort of where they fit in. Um, as well as leaving it open so that you can choose, uh, who you feel is the best candidate when it comes down to it.
Well, one thing I would, I would ask you, Ken, and I'm sure you guys talked about this. What effect, if any, do you think this would have on somebody with three years' experience deciding, well, I don't qualify and I'm not going to apply? Who might otherwise be a very qualified candidate?
Well. And what about that person?
Well, but I'm, but I'm saying.
I can say that if I saw that the ideal candidate.
Okay.
I would have to to, uh, make a better case for myself if I didn't have those, that experience.
So then the benefit of leaving the words, the ideal candidate in. Is, um, it doesn't mandate the requirement for a specific kind of degree.
Yeah, I'm, this was just a suggestion. I think you guys did a good job, and if, if you think it should say, I'm.
We, we can take that back and hash it around one more time, um, the good thing about.
It don't hash it too much. If you all have decided that's the way to go.
Well, we wanted to put it, they, it needed to come in front of the select board for. Consideration and input, and ultimately it will be something that the select board is be comfortable with, because we're going to have to vote to sign up on it, not on today's iteration. Um. Lloyd, did you have, uh?
No, nothing particular. Just that one, it's just a long sentence. If you could set, cut it into, into the block and have, make another sentence that works, finally, that's not, that's a small matter.
And, Ken?
Yeah, I'd say I'd be on the, on that point in the last paragraph, I'd like to hear what the committee. Debates probably for another round, uh, but. I'd be, I'd be interested in, in my opinion, keeping the ideal candidate language, but then removing the five-year language. That would be my compromise on that. Because I think the ideal can, I understand the intent from the ideal candidate perspective, but I think the five-year somehow. Is, uh, contradictory to the ideal candidate in the way it, the way the language is.
Another reason for having that is we feel a purpose of, we're trying to. Attract people, trying to get people to apply, especially we're trying to get well qualified people to apply, and this gives them a. The, the weakest, um, job announcements that. Were among those that we looked at, because all of those have been listed in the MMA for the last several months. Um, were ones that were weakest on the qualifications. Um, in- including that there's actually one that didn't say exactly what you're saying, but it basically said. Uh, we want somebody who's qualified to do the job.
Hmm.
Um. Which. Along with the rest of it, of their announcement, did not give the idea that they were really looking for somebody with much of a. Uh, experience and not with qualifications.
Yeah. Okay.
So we can take it back and.
Sure.
Consider that.
Sure. And then just one final point, I think it's a small one. I'm trying to better understand the added sentence. On page, but it's E, it's a red line, serve as immediate contact person and orchestrator of the response.
Is it just grammatically awkward?
I'm trying to understand what it's actually, what. What it's under the category essential duty, so what specific? The orchestra of the response involving multiple agencies of town and state government. Is that just a?
It's personal quarterbacks. If there's something going on that needs numerous, it's got a lot of stakeholders involved. Numerous people involved, they're going to quarterback it.
Okay.
You might have a flood and, uh, you could ruin your issue problem and you're, uh. This and that and the other, and that's be involved coordinating.
Ken would like to speak.
Okay, Ken.
Just like I said, that's not a sentence that came from the committee, that came from Boyd.
Well.
Yeah.
Uh, that's good to self-edit then. Might have been a rough draft from the board there, okay. I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at that. I'm not, I don't think it's the best written, uh, but that's all.
We can.
I'm not sure, it just seems ambiguous to a certain orchestration. I don't know, maybe the word orchestrator is throwing me off. It sounds.
Facilitator?
Yeah, facilitated, coordinated, I'm not sure, orchestrated, it just has a. Meaning to me, but that's a small point. I think this is great and I look forward to reading it again. It's, it's easier to be on the editorial side of this, very easy, so I appreciate all the hard work that went into it. Tico.
Um, at some point, could the board do a quick review of the hiring process and how it's developed? I don't know where that fits in the schedule.
Yes, yes, we can, yeah, a- at this point, just to briefly summarize, that we have, there's, there was a committee that was formed. Oh, last winter that has, is providing, uh. Uh, the work for the board, which would be job description, I think ultimately interview questions, and then. Or somewhere, or, I, I've been out of it for a minute.
Yeah, so the job description, the posting, the interview questions and the reference questions of the board, you just triggered a reminder. Um, that the board wanted, the committee wanted confirmation that those interview questions. Should be part of the public re- record before they're actually used in an interview.
Okay.
There was concern about making those public, since they're going to be questions that are asked or selecting the questions.
Okay.
I think that I've talked to the lady at MMA about it, and she said the. I asked if the process of the, and they explained exactly your, the, the committee's concern, the process, the. The process, there's a process of developing interview questions has to be conducted in a public meeting, and her answer was yes. You can't have, yeah, so the meeting to, to say, here's, let's make these interview questions. That there's, there's no, uh, there's no justification, she says, for an executive session for that. For that.
Right, okay. So that more or less, oh, excuse me, I was going to follow up, that's, we're basically in the, in the. In the sequence or in the. Working towards this hiring process, there's, there's, that's, that's where we're at at this point.
How long has been, has the town been without a real town manager?
Well, we have an interim town manager right now.
But how long had you, have you, you have one now, how long prior to that, you know?
Uh. We've ne- we, we went, there's. I don't think there was a moment, we went from the previous town manager to the interim town manager immediately.
Now, he's asking you, how long ago did Aaron leave? Is that what you're asking?
I think, I think Aaron left in August of twenty-three, plus or minus, if I'm right.
Well, he didn't, he didn't, uh.
It was, it was not available.
Yeah, he was, he was on, uh, leave. So he was still, he was still at the town manager.
And Bryce didn't, uh, assume acting until October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
After the resignation.
Yeah. We is. That seems an awful long time.
But it, it's not a long time legally, because the t- the previous town manager still was hired and fulfilled. The town manager job as contractually, uh, uh, understood and legally understood. He was on leave. But still the town manager, and then we had the interim town manager hired immediately after the previous town manager's resignation. Yes, there's a gap in terms of, uh, uh. The position and presence of the position, but in terms of, uh, uh, meeting the hiring. Me- meeting the contract and legal requirements, there, there was never a gap without. A town manager in terms of, uh, uh, a position being empty. Though I understand your point that there was a vacancy in, uh, an individual present. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move, or, or I wanted to make sure Hazel had an opportunity to wrap up our hiring process.
Yeah, and I'd like to speak to that.
Yeah, sure, of course.
A matter of protocol, actually, um, we've agreed that when people speak from the floor, they. Uh, introduced or announced, because people that are on the Zoom might not know who's speaking, we can see who's speaking, but they don't know. So I think we didn't follow up on that, so.
Yeah, can you say your name?
I'm Tico Brown. I'm from Tucker, Rhode.
Okay, thank you, excellent. Ken?
Ken Spalding, just in terms of Tico's question too, uh, it has been a hardly long time, we, we have not had. Full town manager, but there is, there's also part of that was the advisory, hiring advisory, and it was formed last January. But we quickly found out that we didn't really know what our form of government was. And it was very confusing, um, based on the adoption of one way, of being the town manager. Former governor nineteen seventy-nine, and then subsequently, other things were passed that didn't agree with that, the state law change. Um, and so we needed to have a new, uh, ordinance, creating the, the form of town government. Town manager, former town government, so we had to have that as a, and the. And then the advisory committee has been started. And it also likes it, that in terms of, of having, having to have the development of questions that are asked, be in a public meeting. Frankly, it just doesn't make sense to me, but I think that if we have to do that, then we must. We should distribute those questions in advance to the candidates, if they're, if they're, if they're involved in a public way.
Yeah, but, uh, uh, your committee is a public meeting, so isn't that, that's the, the committee is public.
That was the charge given to the, the select board gave to the committee.
Right.
But I think what the committee is asking is that you allow us to have an executive session for the development of the questions.
I, I think if you're going to have a committee that does it, that's the way they have to do it, but. With all due respect to the committee that I think has worked really hard, do we really need a committee to develop the interview questions? Uh, I mean. Get the, the areas, I mean, what, so if, when this interview comes up, we're going to have a, a list of questions that everybody has asked and. Do we deviate from that, or, I mean, what do you, what do you anticipate on, on this?
I, I think that what we would do is, we haven't discussed exactly what we're doing, but my. Estimate is that the way it would be done is we would look at a lot of, there are, there are resources out there for one question. We would look at those, we'd come up with some suggestions and provide you with a number of suggestions, tying them to what's. In this job description. And then, but giving you more than needed, and you could select those, and you could come back to the committee and say, well, there's more, or you could just change them altogether.
Hmm.
Say, well, yeah, let's combine these or, it was just the legwork, just like the leg of this job.
Have you seen some lists of the kind of questions that are used in other towns, or have you had enough?
Yes, there are.
I thought.
You haven't, you haven't studied, you haven't discussed in a.
I want to clarify, the question that's coming out of this, Bryce, can we clarify, uh, exactly the, what, what the law states on a public meeting? And where those job interview questions can be developed? Let's determine, you know, what those requirements are specifically, and as far as debating what the interview questions are tonight, we're not going to do that. And we're going to move agenda items if Hazel is ready.
Ready.
Ready, okay. Uh, we have a discussion on the moratorium dated ten fifteen, twenty twenty-four. And Jim Katsiakakis, uh, about the moratorium ordinance update. So I'm seeing two parts to this agenda item. Uh, I know you spoke at last meeting, um. Part one is the board needs to, or if so chooses, set a public hearing date. Is that first part one?
That's crucial.
Okay, and the public hearing would be for, uh, re- re-extending the, the moratorium. So that's part one, and then part two is, um. Evaluating whether or not the board chooses, uh, to utilize Jim Kay in his, uh, work. Uh, in changing and addressing the ordinance. Um. So, Bryce, do you have a schedule for, uh, the dates for the public hearing?
So the background on the expiration of the last extension would be January third. So it would be my recommendation to the board that we. Had scheduled tonight, the public hearing for the first meeting in December.
Okay.
It gives us, in case where it was snow or who knows what.
Yeah.
Um, that, it gives us that second date as well. And then based off the confirmation of it being December third, I will, you know, go backwards and notice it.
Would we rule on this date at the, at the same time, or do we have to wait it?
What was that question?
Would, would we rule on the date at the same time? The same time as the public proceeding, or do we have to wait a week, week or two?
I think you're asking, we, we can vote to extend the moratorium on the third.
Right. That's.
Yeah, that's when, if you recall, when we extended it last time, there was quite an extensive motion, and it had two parts. We have to prove. Why we're do extending it, so that will be decided after the public hearing, that we do that.
And then you'll, it's what, three consecutive days in advance or one seven day?
Seven day?
Yeah. Okay, and that'll be noticed, but would a board member like to, um. Drive up, make a motion on setting this date if they choose? Drive up, make a motion on setting this date if they choose?
If we, uh, set December third as the date for the hearing on the, on the ordinance. On the moratorium.
Extension. The extension, can you just put that, you know?
Yeah, there's, uh, the extension of the date.
Can you read that back to us, Kathy, please?
Yeah, to set the December third as the date of the hearing for the moratorium extension.
Yeah.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Okay. Uh, and then the parts, part two of this agenda item is about Jim Katsiakakis and. Did, we had a, we had a number, I think, for like a cost for this work, and really the question is whether the board would like to move forward with working with Jim on this.
I, I spoke with Jim and I think, again, my recommendation would be to the board to see. I believe the committee is gonna have a product for the planning board. I would think it would be wise to see what that is and then. Have consultation with Jim to see, you know, what's appropriate.
Okay.
I mean, that's true, and this gives us that much extra time to do that, so we, that second part of this agenda item really isn't as.
So we can wait.
Uh, Trent? I'm sorry, this is Ted Tucci, I apologize for interrupting, I don't know how to do the hand raising function.
Yeah, that's fine, all right, Ted, you're on.
Could I have, yeah, if, if I could just, uh, if you could just indulge me briefly, I can give you, um, I can give the select board a, a brief update from the advisory committee, which I think will help you with. Part two of the question that you're considering.
Okay, thank you.
So just very briefly, um, the advisory committee believes we've made significant progress in carrying out our charge. And, um, as Bryce has suggested, we, we believe we're on target. To provide a third round of work product to the planning board in early November. Um, so, so, uh, w- we are making good progress and we will have, um. A, a third set of revised work product to give to the planning board, um, in, in relatively short order. We, we also agree with, uh, Jim Kay's observation that it's really not within our charge, um, to be recommending or attempting to change the Wayne zoning ordinance. Um, uh, and, and, um. For whatever it's worth, I think the consensus of the committee is that we think, um, the, the town's interest probably would be best served. By incorporating substantive performance standard changes regarding, uh, campground approval. Within the Wayne zoning ordinance, and then having a separate regulatory standalone police power ordinance for ongoing licensing. Uh, we understand the logic of that and it seems to make sense. The good news is, in terms of our work product, wha- what we are, um, planning on providing to the planning board. Um, is a draft ordinance that is in two forms. The first form will have the substantive performance standards in it. And then we will do a second version that, um, i- is a, is a streamlined regulatory licensing ordinance. That would be a standalone ordinance that, that could be considered by the town for purposes of, um, ongoing. You know, regulatory oversight of campgrounds, once they've gone through the zoning process and have been approved. So what this means practically is that by early November, the town's lawyer will have. A, a pretty good working draft of a police power ordinance, of a regulatory ordinance for licensing purposes. That hopefully would streamline the amount of legal work that's needed to be done. Um, and then it's just a matter of looking at the substantive provisions, the performance standards, they're called. In the other ordinance that we're providing and figuring out where those best fit in. Uh, in terms of amending the zoning code itself. So hopefully, the work we're doing will actually. Allow the town to spend less money on legal fees in terms of. Proposing amendments to the zoning ordinance and creating a regulatory ordinance.
Okay.
Thank you, that's really good.
Thank you. So at this point. Board will wait.
Yeah.
Right, that's consensus, okay. Okay, um. It's, oh, a discussion on LAD's, LAD Recreation Center and town relationship, um. Bryce, why don't you start us off, please?
So I think we'll see. Response from the town attorney, you'll also see, cause the timing was that Eric had submitted to the board the draft. Of their proposal. Again, I think. In my conversation with the lawyer. It's kind of a. Unique and unusual arrangement. And it all depends on really how the town is gonna view the LAD Rec Center operations, as I call them, um. I think. Um, I don't know if any of you were able to read through Matt's email, but essentially. From what I get from it is, as, um. Put it plain and simple. If the LAD Rec Center Board wants to. Hire, fire staff, make decisions. It's really risky for the town to keep. The relationship the way it is. I think if the town wants to make it a town department. That would also be all right, but it would give. You know, the final say to any decisions to the select board. And I think that's just kinda. The wishy-washy. You know, of the relationship and it just needs to be clarified and need to get feedback, but this is the lawyer's point of view on the situation.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think.
He was pretty clear that the current situation is unacceptable. And he said, there's two ways you can fix it. The LAD Center is. Hires all the people and takes care of it and pays its own bills. It doesn't go through the, uh, accounts payable portion of the town, uh, or. The LAD Center becomes a town department, part of a recreation department. And, but the, there was, there was not much wishy-washy that I saw in there about his statement that the current situation is not good.
So I think it's. Maybe I'm saying this with. Too, too, too easy. Seems to me there's a common alignment between what the Rexana wants, which is to be responsible for its own staffing, hiring, firing, blah, blah, blah. And the recommendation for the lawyer, which is to let the LAD Rexana do all of their personnel-related stuff. So. I think it would be, I think I, I'd be ready almost to make a motion, but then we could have discussion on, um. But I think the, the motion would be that. The LAD Rec take responsibility for all of its staffing. Decisions, including running their own payroll. And that the town, um. Provides them the money that was passed in the budget. Um, and we should probably set a date, I, I, I'd say by December thirty first. Um, and then we have that discussion.
Uh, is that, would that be?
That'd be my motion is that, uh, the, the LAD Rexana take responsibility for all their staffing and payroll. By December thirty first.
Sir.
And their, and their accounts payable?
I was focusing first of all on the staffing piece of it, because I think we need to do it in bite-sized chunks. And that the town then would provide the funding that was budgeted for staff-related items.
Okay. Do we want to have a second on that motion? All right, discussion. Uh, okay, and then I'll come to her. Yeah.
I, I, well, for. First off, I think probably. I would suggest that maybe we need to have. Uh, a small group of Bryce and one or two board members. Agree to meet with members of the LAD Board of a similar size to discuss the mechanics of how this would happen and what it would mean. Um, I, I think the accounts payable is just as big a problem as the payroll. Maybe not just as big, but it's, but it's a big problem, the, the, the question should be why is the town? Ha- why, why is Bruce paying the bills for the last center? Uh, and, uh, and are we keeping good track of this? Is the LAD Center getting credit for everything they send us? Uh, and are we getting everything from them that we need? I don't know how good a track we are keeping, they, they suggested that if we're gonna pay their bills. That the money go into a separate account, which I would, I would certainly agree with if we're gonna do that. But I think there's a total, I think the discussion should be. The LAD Center, the only services they get from the town is the town ensures the building. The, the town takes care of the grounds, as we've, as we've said, the town can appropriate money for LAD Center activities and, and that, that, that's what Hazel was saying. And the, the LAD organization, whoever the LAD Board is aboard of, I'm not really clear on that. But, but that organization, uh, takes care of their own bills, their own payroll, they buy insurance. Uh, for their operations and the town is designated an additional insured on that insurance policy, this is part of what the, what the lawyer said. And there's just, there's, there's just a separation.
So I'm in agreement, all of that needs to be taken fair and sorted out, um. The reason I broke it into chunks is I think it's easier to do bite-sized pieces and then to have all of it in one big. Motion, when some of it needs more research, and the reason I did the payroll separately in my motion was because. From my knowledge of payroll and stuff like that, it's easier to do a transition on a year end, so that from.
For tax purposes.
Tax purposes.
Yeah.
You don't, you're not crossing years between who is responsible. It's a clean cut over, so based on the, the, all of the staffing, um. Expectations or desires from the LAD Rexana, I think it's easier to do that because it clearly aligns with. Guidance we got from the lawyer that we can't live in this hybrid role, this hybrid mode. Um, I think if we could do that part of the motion. I don't see any, um. I really don't see a conflict between what the board, what LAD Rec wanted to do or wants to continue doing and what. What we're doing, we just need to isolate payroll first.
Okay, uh, Eric.
Thank you, Eric Spinnipur, um, I am here tonight representing the LAD Recreation Center Board of Directors. Um, and I have not yet reviewed the town attorney's letter, so I'm, I'm speaking a little bit in the dark, but. I can say that, that some of what you're recommending has been considered by the last board. And felt to be generally impractical. It, it, it could be done if the LAD Center was for to take over, thank you. Were to take over responsibility for payroll administration, accounts payable, and those other functions. It would entail hiring additional staff, additional software. And an additional expense, which is frankly duplicative of what's already being incurred by the town. And, and the, and the funding for those additional expenses is likely gonna come back to the town, because the LAD Center. Has limited sources of funds as it is, and has been turning more and more to the town for additional funding requirements. So the reason we did not outright recommend that was because of that duplication and additional expense. Now, one thing I, I will say ought to be at least considered. Is if the concern by the town's attorney is this separate and parallel governance. Many small towns have recreation committees that, that govern their recreation programs. I think the big distinction that we have here in Wayne is that that board is self-perpetuating. They're not appointed by the select board, they're not, uh, they don't run for office to elected positions. If, if it's easier to solve this problem by making them a town-appointed board. Or some other form of governance over that, that may be a simpler solution than completely separating and duplicating services between two organizations.
So can we respond to the personnel part of that? And not include all the accounts payable and all their additional staff, there's no doubt, because. Small organizations, including the church, have a payroll company that does payroll, but. Relatively moderate, um, prices. So I think, again, that's why I separated out doing the personnel only is, you know, in consideration of. Um. The Rexana having to fund somebody doing their payroll, but frankly. Uh, nobody's funding the town treasurer doing payroll for. However, many employees are getting through, put through payroll on the town side. But basically subsidizing that.
And, and, and also, it, it isn't clear to me that the economies, even to the LAD Center, of having the town do this. Are really there. For example, we pay about fifteen thousand dollars for health insurance. For a single man who's probably under thirty years old. Because it goes on an insurance trust that I assume is, is. Uh, uh, everyone pays the same type deal. I looked up on Google today and it tells me that a, that a thirty, thirty-year-old male should be able to get a gold plan off of the exchange for half that amount. Uh, so that's one of the things I wondered, when I saw it in the, in the budget that we had fifteen thousand dollars for. For his health insurance, I thought, man, that seems kinda high for a, for a, a, a. Just this, just the one person, not a family, a thirty-year-old male, so maybe it doesn't all, you know, the, it, it may not everything be. Uh, there'd be economies of having the town do it, and then the town has limits. Hey, in my opinion, with our current staffing, I think the town's got more to do than it can do well already. And without, without taking on, uh, administrative functions for other entities. Which consider themselves independent of the town.
Uh, did you, Ken, yeah.
Ken Spalding, I, I'm also on the board. This is a town. This is a town function, this is something that's done for the town, and to treat it as. Well, there's some, there's some other entity that's not, you know, we don't wanna support this other entity, uh, just seems. I don't, it's, it's not looking at the whole picture. The, the, the building, the grounds, all belong to the town. This was a donation to the LAD family, to the town, to benefit the town. The LAD Board was created to run these, the programs that are here. Um, it's all for the benefit of the town, this is not some outside entity that we're trying not to support. And I, I think it, it makes sense to look at the bigger picture and, and maybe there is a savings. One, one way or the other, but it would be nice to know that before making a decision. And there are, I, and I don't understand this idea that, that you can't have it essentially the way it is, because I've worked with many nonprofits. That serve as agents for some group that is, you know, doesn't have that distinction of being a five oh one C three, where. The, the money that's, that goes to the, this group is. Goes into the, the nonprofit, which keeps separate books for it, and. And they have, the staff, it receives their money from. You know, that fund, which is part of a, a different nonprofit, that really has nothing to do with the management of this other group, just, that's right, so. I don't understand why it's, it's a problem in this case.
Well, I think, can I comment first, I, I, how I. My perception of this is, I don't, I don't think the board is necessarily, I, I know in our conversation, I, 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 I'm speaking on behalf of myself and. I think the board recognizes the, the, the relationship, the value, the importance. Of the LAD Center in this community, and I don't. I, I, I'm not looking at this conversation as a, as a question to, to the LAD Center's, uh, significance in our community, you know, for. From years and years, yeah, I think I'm, I'm, I'm seeing this more as a clarification. In the sense of liability. And I don't, I don't, I think we can have those, I think we can still have, but I'd like, I, I'd still see the relationship being, uh, uh. It's strong and important to the town, but I think we're just clarifying town liability. And I, so I, 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 I wanna make sure that, they said, I'd like to present that, uh, perspective from, from my, from my end on how this conversation. On how this conversation is constructing. I don't think it's us against them or them against us. I think it's, how do we determine? What liability and risk there is uh by not having. Clarification. So I, I, I'm, I hear what you're saying. I'm trying to respond to that and how we are intent and what we're doing here.
Trent is a hundred percent correct on that. That's one of the things the, the lawyer basically says. The town has no control over the hiring or supervision of lad employees. Yet it has responsibility for their actions. Now. Nobody is saying the town should dump the lad center. The town, at the town meeting, the town could appropriate whatever monies it sees fit, that the town sees fit to support the lad center. Those monies would go to the lad center or the lad center to use and manage and take care of its own. It, its own business, making all the costs and burden transparent. And it isn't how much town, you know, what does it cost the town to do this? No, nobody's saying that the town shouldn't support the lad center. But the town should support the last center in a way that that's transparent and relates to certain appropriations that the town votes on. And then the last center is responsible for the last center programs. And and I keep talking about the last center. I guess this, this, this building, we're not talking about the building. We're talking about the lad center programs. That, that the board, you know.
Excuse me, I just got to correct something. We're not talking about the program, we're just talking about the staffing. Cause my motion that we're talking about is quite narrow. It's about. In, cause in alignment with. The goals and and what the rec center wanted to do, it's aligning it legally so we can support that. But I will say I was on the board in rec center way back when. And it was not run through the town at that point in time. It ran for decades. There's a. As a independent unit doing its own payroll.
Eric. I do that, I've known the board for thirty years and, and in my tenure, it's, it's never been done that way. I want to make a couple of points. I guess first I would ask that before this board makes any decisions to do anything, that we be allowed to take this back to the latter board. Relay this discussion because frankly, if the primary concern of the town council is the inability to hire and fire the director. And supervise his, his activities. The board may prefer to, to surrender some of that responsibility rather than do some of the alternatives that have been discussed here tonight. We haven't had that discussion. Uh, the second thing, I, I just want to make a point that unlike the church or the library. This is a unique relationship because the town does own the property, owns the building. And even if we decide to cut the lad center board away as a separate entity with their own personnel management. We are still going to have to address many of the issues that we attempted to address in this document about how the two entities are going to relate to one another. So I, I don't want to lose sight of that, that there was still value in trying to document that.
So can, uh, we've got a motion on the table. Can you reread the motion, please?
Sorry, the motion was the last center take responsibility for all their staffing and payroll by December thirty first. Wasn't that simply?
And that the town will. Send the money that was appropriated in the budget to the rec center.
Originally I had that in there. I thought you were scratching it. So the motion for the lad rec to take responsibility for all their staffing. And payroll and the town provides the money that was passed in the budget, I thought you said originally. By December thirty first. Does that sound right?
Twenty twenty four, yeah. That, that was what the motion was.
Right, Bryce?
Well, I think just for a point why this is coming up, I don't, you know. Every time I talk to our insurance agent or lawyer, it's always been a question mark. And you know, I guess, I think why it, this is a thing is because as I see it, I'm trying to assess the risk and from. Uh, our MMA rep, you know, one year we pay workers comp on the staff here, one year we don't. I think the lad rec center is paying. And so there's just a lot, there's so much confusion that it just needs to be clarified, but I think, you know, it's, it's pretty clear. Based off what the lawyer said. You know, I, I think from what I see in the budget, we's budget for Adam's health insurance. And that is it.
Retirement.
Well, and retirement. Based around him. So there's nothing else in our budget. For anything to do with the operations and it goes in both ways. I mean, I don't know if. Uh, municipal government can, you know, operate in that standard as the lawyer, lawyer had said. I guess a big issue is too, on our end, like we've done. Last, our last fiscal year, we over expended our expenses and we have one checkbook. We're getting, you know, we're getting big grant funds to fund this program. And again, that's just. It's that clarification separation on for both entities, just to get it straight.
Well, I think, I think, um. I'd like, I'd like to recognize um Eric's request to have an opportunity to take this back to his board. Uh, under, you know, under, with. The conversation that was had tonight and then he also has an opportunity, I think, the letter from Matt T came in. Oh, Friday. And he's, he said that they haven't been able to review this letter. So I, I'm just gonna make that statement and how that's gonna determine how I vote on this motion because I, I definitely. That, that there, I'm gonna leave it that. I'd like to, I'd like, he asked for that opportunity.
So I'm trying to figure out how to amend my motion to respect that request. And I think we should acknowledge, like, a lot of work went into this and it's, it's really useful stuff. As we move forward with trying to clarify the roles and responsibilities. Um, so I'm trying to come up with the amendments.
Well, we could, we can vote on this if you, we can vote on it as is and then.
Well, it's, I think it'd be fairly simple just to. To tweak it a little bit so that it reflects um that we're making a quest that the rec center do that. Which gives them a response, a time to go take it back and respond. As opposed to mandating that they're gonna take them back, which is kind of the way it was. It was worded.
Oh, would, would we like to vote on this and then maybe make another motion that refers to. What you're talking about, would that be simpler? Or me, or have more clarity?
Well, if, didn't we want to talk to them and get their input on, say, a date that this transition occurs? As example, like we're saying December thirty first, I don't know if that's something that's, if that's something that you want their input on or not.
I, I think I heard Eric say that on, under, under, I don't want to speak for you, but I under, I thought, I, I. You, you may, the, the Lads Center may look at this differently, given the content, given the information that came out of this conversation.
My point was if, if you vote this action tonight, that you are heading down this particular path.
Right.
It may be difficult to change course in the future and. And I just want the opportunity for the last and forward to consider this information before we take any action.
Right.
I would find that very fair.
I think it's fair as well and I support that.
Yeah, I support that going back. It's just the best way to do that without, um. Yeah, the best way to do it.
Should we withdraw the motion?
Well, it doesn't have a second, I don't believe.
Yeah, it had a second, that's why we're discussing it.
Draw the motion and uh simply say it's the board wants to initiate a process between, between Dip Bryce and. Another member of the, of the board and the last center people and figure it out.
Well, I don't know if you can withdraw our motion after the discussion.
We can vote on this.
I think you have to vote on it.
Vote on it. All, all in favor. All opposed.
I had to, I made the motion. That's what Robert Rule says.
No, it does?
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah, if you make a motion, you have to.
I didn't know that. Okay, so now I think it would be nice to have some formal action on this, this, the next step forward.
Which time do you think you need?
The lad board just met this past week, so we're not scheduled to meet again for another month. Um, so it's. Probably going to take us at least a month before we.
And we can supervise their information while we're, well. Between now and then.
But that probably puts us past the end of December, just so we know.
Yep, so maybe we ask, ask the rec center to consider.
Having special meeting.
Finding the, find, um. Discussing the ability and timeframe to start doing that personnel and staffing. And payroll.
It matters. Oh, get, start together.
Start together information. So then they can do their research about, you know, what's the best timeframe and they did. Found it by twelve thirty one because they have researched and find a payroll company, I'll find somebody who will do it, oh, blah, blah, blah. Um, so we could suggest they find their own, they suggest a timeframe.
Which you bring up, you're sort of setting an example of a really interesting situation because the board has no authority over. That the lad center even requests such.
Yes.
Statement. You know, that which is point.
Right.
Taken.
But we also operate inside all kinds of legal recommendations, but continuing to. Uh, consider them as, as town.
Yeah.
Stuff and it's not, it's nothing about the director. Because it's all of their summer employees, all of those councils, however many people, how many people do they do payroll for? Do you know?
Well, how about, how about this? How about, how about, how about we formalize a possible scenario that, that the select board's proposing? Like, and then they have a chance to review, respond to it. For example, I mean, we're not taking action like. This is the separation, this is. We're kind of jumping ahead again, because I'm not sure what the board can react to outside of. Eric and Ken bringing back our conversation, but you know, do we, can we formalize a possible arrangement? And then the board can look at it at our next meeting and then that arrangement can be. Given to the board.
What do, what do you think about just the board making clear sort of its general? Uh, generally, if we, if we generally, if we want to go with the, with the uh recommendation of the lawyer. That there be separation, if that's a general idea, then have, have one of us. And uh Bryce, or two of us and Bryce, as long as there's less than three, one or two of us and Bryce. Meet with whoever the lad people have and talk this out and then those people come back and report to the board where we stand.
Yeah, I, I, there has to be something concrete to react to and respond to. So yes, I support that. Eric.
I will say that before Aaron left, that was what had been the plan of action, Christine. You were going to develop a document jointly or arrangement jointly between the subset of the last century board and the subset of the select board working. Just as Henry has said, to collaboratively iron the cell.
Okay.
And something that's really.
So we don't, we don't need to, we don't even know if we need to motion for that. We just have to. Pick whoever's gonna go talk to them if they would like to talk to us. And as you said, we can't make them talk to us if they don't want to.
I would, uh.
So I mean, it was a bit awkward to receive this as a formal document that's gone through legal review and we didn't. Know it was coming or what was being worked on or what, you know, like if we're gonna collaborate, then.
I'll send everybody a bunch of boxes that I did. I don't know if you saw.
Yeah, I saw that.
And that, but, and that was only if you were gonna, if you were gonna do that. Um, this is a little bit weird, uh, Trent, but, but can I ask Eric a question about the, the lad center board? Who is it a board of? Is there a five oh one C three organization? Is it, hey, my wife's on the board and I've asked her that for a question. Okay, you're on this board. What is it a board of?
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting entity. It's not a five oh three C. Um, it, it, it's, it's not incorporated in any way.
Okay.
Uh, it has always acted as an extension of the town.
But then now I'm putting my, my, I'm not authorized to practice law, but I study it at that. And we can't really, I mean, an agreement has to be made with some entity, some legal person. I mean, we can talk to them about this, but one of the things also we need to think about is what does it mean? Like if the, like if, if Eric uh and the lad board signs something and says, fine, the lad board agrees to this. Well, who's agreed to that? Who can yet be enforced against? Uh, I, I think that I'm guessing that the lawyer in his, uh, in his letter is assuming. That there's some legal person, you know, not a, not a human, but there's some legal person. That the lad board is the board of. And that shouldn't, that shouldn't, that shouldn't keep us from doing the talk or doing anything that you just said, but that is. Uh, something that when we go back to our lawyer to see. Okay, here's what we've kind of all agreed. Is this okay with you? Or would you have a recommendation? The, the discussion should also be able to tell him who the town is dealing with.
I would say it's, it's an accident of history that has just evolved this way. For nearly fifty years, it is operating. As it is now. And frankly, it, it has made the last center board a little uncomfortable at times. We don't exist as a separate entity.
Okay.
So how do we keep the ball rolling? Because. We've had it fun enough the agenda for several months.
Yeah. In, in all of this, in all of this information, all of this conversation, I, I, I. I tend to see two simple paths forward and I think we need to clarify and at least have those two paths. There, there's, I see it as two options. I mean, there might be some conversation that finds a hybridization, but the information that we have in front of us suggests there's two options. Is a town or it's not a town. And I think that. Somehow we need to. Articulate, define, write out option A, option B, and then. Like, I don't think we need to meet to, to talk about the history, how it is. It's like a year or two options. How do we want to make this work?
Yeah.
So that's, I think there's a little bit of homework on the town's end. Prior to this meeting where we can go with. And that doesn't even necessarily express the consensus of which direction the board wants to go at this point. I think. That's just saying here, here's where we, we. Seems like we have to go. So. I'm, I keep looking at Bryce here. Thinking, is there a way?
I think Bryce keeps bringing up the fact that the books are very, uh, they don't balance.
It's one of my frustrations. It's nothing against the operations or what, you know, I work with them, but again. I'm purchasing agent, he has a town credit card. I, I mean, it's just, it's the.
So I think, I think, I think. Is there any board members that would like to volunteer to help organize? And uh, drive, um. Chart out these scenarios, two scenarios. I'm leaning way back right now.
I'd be happy to work on it. And it's, you were on the board before, seems like that would be very valuable. Input.
And I know you're very, you're busy with hiring. I know it's, it's, everybody's busy. I get it.
And I'm very interested, especially when there are ways to. Reduce the town's risk.
Right.
Even if it's. Uh, step by step.
So I'm hearing a maybe from Hazel.
Well, they're not gonna meet for a month, so.
It's, they're executive bodies that can meet, but their people can talk tomorrow.
But you, but what I'm, what I'm envisioning, and maybe I'm off the mark here, is sort of a little bit of prepared. Work with Bryce or to, to sort of organize these scenarios. So when the meeting happens, there's some concrete.
Well, uh, information. An example would be, make, let's make that example of, of all of these things that are, that are unclear. Administerably, these low level things that gives you headaches. Let's make a list of all those things.
Or I, even, even, uh, what I'm thinking is not so much pointing out what's unclear. It's what's the solution? Like, what's the? What's the organizational structure? And I think it's been.
Clear, there's two paragraphs in this email that I think make it pretty clear.
Pretty clear.
You either, you.
That's right. And that's where, that's where Henry started.
Yeah, and that's what you said too. This, this, this guy, is it Phil? No, it's not Phil, someone else on top. Matt, Matt says. This is, this is wrong. You either need, need to do A or B.
Right.
And that's, that's his opinion.
Right.
And we can put that out.
So maybe that's, maybe that can be shared. Cause you don't have a copy of this. Because you don't have a copy of this.
I do know.
You do now, but the board hasn't had a chance to review, discuss. So really, it's maybe it's, maybe it's no extra homework.
Yeah, and and to be clear, this email, did it come from that agreement? This was something prior to. You know, it just so happened the timing was pretty much smack dab on.
Right.
But yeah.
So, okay. Good, no extra work. Bryce, you have extra work.
So I think, yeah, I would sign up for this ongoing conversation.
Okay.
And subject to some.
Okay.
Timing constraints.
Okay, and then as as far as our conversation at the board level. We can um. We really, unless something comes up in terms of agenda item, we'll wait till after the the live center boards had a chance to. Review. Does that, does that make sense? And you said that was in December, to November, December, November. That. Yeah, okay, thank you. Thanks, thanks again. Thanks, Eric, Hazel, everyone. Thank you. Um. Okay, um. New business, consider approving the use of road reconstruction and paving reserve funds in the amount of sixteen thousand six hundred and forty dollars for Innis. Innis Ridge culverts, Bryce.
So this was, um, if you recall back. Four months ago. We had a quote to do all the culverts. Um, before we paved, that was approved. It turns out I ended up walking the road and we did not need to do every driveway culvert up there. So I ended up cutting the bill in half. But um. You know, our, our regular budget culverts is for um, maintenance. And this was the project to get in his page, which it is now. So we're just looking to cover that cost from the reserve fund.
Not sure. I totally, so this is money that is not in the. Six hundred thousand.
No, it is, but it's a, it's a reserve fund, so we, I need your approval.
Got it. Okay, thank you. So it's not, okay. It's got it. Is there a motion for this?
Uh, I moved, we approved the use of the road reconstruction and paving reserve funds in the amount of. Sixteen thousand six hundred and forty for the Innis Ridge culverts.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor. Okay.
Question, please?
Yes.
Tico Brown, um, this is kind of ancillary to the question here, but does the town? Have a policy with regard to um, color replacements? As we've seen. History is throwing us a curveball here and. Um, storms, storms are getting worse. So if we're putting back culverts. One to one sizes. I don't think that's appropriate. I I I think we're gonna lose at some point. So do we have a policy that says? We replace them at. X percent uh, plus of what we've got today.
Yeah, it's a good question. I know the, there, there is a culvert driveway policy as it pertains to that particular question. I don't know if it necessarily. Bryce.
So the theory, I don't, we don't have a culvert policy that pertains directly to the size, but. For that was kind of the first start of the project since we've got these crazy rainstorms is that we. Any cross culver under a road, we've upgraded from fifteen to eighteen inch. Um, and then there's some driveway culverts that. You know, for say at the bottom of Kent Hill that has the whole hill of water. Coming to one driveway cover would be upgraded because they've been washed out. So that is the, the feeling. You know. That the cover up.
Can uh.
Necessary. So policy could, we could amend, I could get that policy to the board and we could.
Yeah, I wonder if is, is the road committee meeting at all or have they met recently?
Haven't really. It was kind of a, you know, la, their terms I see expired at this end of the fiscal year. We haven't really been meeting.
Okay.
And we can reignite that.
Okay, maybe, maybe at the next board meeting and then perhaps we can um. Take a look at uh, policies that are currently in existence and have the committee review some of those.
I I think it's quite timely. I I have friends in. Um, eastern Tennessee, western North Carolina, and they've been. Really hard, hard hit. And if we can figure out a way to do some preventive work in in trying to. Right size um, culverts that will be replaced. I think hopefully we can save ourselves some time, effort and money.
Sure, yeah, yeah, thank you. That's a good point. Uh, let's see, um. Supplements and abatements, none. Write this on a town manager report.
Um, so report on the roads. He's probably noticed if he drove old. That has been paved, Innis Ridge Road has been paved. And Con Road is.
Half done.
Half done, I noticed when I was driving. So that should be finished this week by tomorrow. They were working today. Um, so that, those projects are coming along. They have. A lot of those roads were in horrible condition and had some pretty nice. Uh, holes and potholes and. So it's good to see those uh. Fixed. Um, second is it's election time and the office has been inundated with absentee ballots. So Kathy's full-time job lately has been. Um, putting those through the state system online. People coming to go, I think we're just shy of three hundred, which is. Yeah, yeah, it's been quite a turnout like half expected, so. That has been keeping us busy. Um. Other than that, I don't have uh, too much else to.
Okay.
Can you go back? Did you say that road commissioner to road committee? Terms expired?
It didn't on that, I mean. On the books, I would say yes, because in that list of committees, they weren't on there.
They weren't. I thought we reinstated all the committees.
Yeah.
There's no road committee on the list.
Okay.
I mean, I think for move to be proper with things and do that, I haven't been meeting.
Okay.
You know, it's been more of a, I found it to be transparent, one-on-one. That's a lot better for my sake as roads commissioner to.
Okay. So you're, um, okay, so we're gonna, we need to have a discussion on.
If you.
If we desire to have a road.
And I think a lot of that was just in terms of. Myself as interim, you know, I think it's, it works well. In instances. To keep eye, you know, I think the charge could be different to keep eyes on all roads. Obviously, I can't be everywhere. You know, specifically, I don't think it was very specific what the charge was for the road. Commission, uh, mission, you know.
So if we were to, we, the board needs to look at that and look at the charge and determine if that's something we want to continue with.
And we had a member exit, so I think it would be good to, if we want to open that back up and.
Okay. Okay.
So is that process to the, to have. Bryce post something or we want to talk about it first and then have him.
So it sounds like we need to. Talk about it at the board in terms of what the charge is and what we're, what we're. What we're looking for, then we can determine if we want to proceed, we can post. Uh, I'm gonna come back to Tico because public comments are coming right up.
Okay, thank you.
Uh. Uh, all set from the town manager. All right, uh, board member reports.
I sent out an email about the. Warrant approval protocol, and I'm not gonna say anything more. It's all in there and I'd like to put it on the agenda for our next meeting.
Yep, thanks. Other board members?
We've had mine.
All set, all set. Okay, public comments. Tico.
Tico Brown, uh, one of my thoughts and I talked to um. Uh, Bryce with about the road committee was. It gives us a chance to have other eyes around the town looking at. Um, roads as opposed to a single, if one person. Um, we've got some talent in in the town here as the people who know construction. So, you know, if you can find somebody that uh, say, all right, yeah, I'll be responsible for. Tucker Road and Strickland Ferry, then when we come to a meeting of the committee. Then we have a person that can say, all right, I've looked at this area, here's what I found. So if we can do that in multiple uh, instances and having people in in essence. Responsible for certain parts of the town, I think that helps the committee as a whole and certainly. Um, helps the board here because y'all will have a lot of direct input. From people who. First of all, know construction and then second, you see what's going on up there. So just my ideas. About about the commission.
Sure, yeah, thanks. Uh, other public comments tonight? Anything online? Seeing none. Oh, Tico, one more.
So what whatever the end is, uh, I'd like to follow up on the hiring process for the town manager, please.
In a public, this is the time right now.
What's, what's your plan? For how long is this gonna take?
Yeah, so the, the board voted last uh, at our last select board meeting, um. Bryce has been hired as the interim town manager to the close of the fiscal year. Uh, June first. Twenty twenty five. Sorry, July first, twenty twenty five. Uh, and then the work that the hiring committee. Is doing will continue per their charge. Uh, clearly, there was some conversation about uh, around uh. Uh, interview questions, so we're gonna get some more information on that. Uh, and I think. I think it would be unfair or I I don't have the information to set. An exact time or date at this point. I don't think that's been determined right now outside all the process. In how we are going to hire is really the stage that we're in at this time. So that's the information I have for tonight. Does that seem reasonable?
The motion of um. Continues at least until June thirtieth of twenty five.
Did you hear that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I have a concern and it seems so at at this point, we've got um, a good candidate in this place. And at this point. He has a lot of knowledge. That he's gained from being at the town office. Um, he also shows. Uh, to me anyway, uh, a great concern for this community and making sure that. He can do the best work that he can do. Problem is. This is gonna, this sounds like it it can take some time and quite a work. Um, and appropriately so for all this to happen. When you get into a, a higher hiring situation, all of us have been in hiring situations before. Sometimes you can lose a very, very talented candidate. Um, because there's competition out there. Um, and I would really hate to see us. Ended up in a, in a position where. We lose it, um, because I say he's been at the town office, he knows the people, he knows a lot of people in town here. He knows, uh. I think most of the issues. Um. I think we should try to figure out a way as best we can to get him on board as quickly as possible. Rather than possibly losing them to somebody else. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Any other public comments? All right, so a motion to adjourn.
Oh, you don't like to move, so.
You can, I'm good with it. I like it. All in favor. Okay, thanks. Thanks, everyone. Have a nice evening.